Meeting today to conduct matters of business got our hearts and our mind in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, import your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll go to approval of the agenda. I think we might have some items we might want to add tonight.
Mr. Chairperson?
Sir?
If we could add elections for offices to the agenda, please.
So we'll add elections of offices to the first item of new business. Any additional discussion? May I receive a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Your second?
Second.
First and a second. Second, Blade. All in favor?
Aye.
Any posts? Next item, we'll go to citizens' comments. Do you have any citizens' comments tonight?
We have one tonight. It's Mr. Robert Delillo.
Delillo.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the commission. I appreciate your time tonight. Wish you all a happy new year. I understand before commission tonight, you guys will be voting, discussing on approval of new subdivision regulations as well as zoning ordinances and regulations. I would like to use this moment to point out to you that some of the importance and opportunity that you have before you with any new subdivision ordinances and regulations, zoning ordinances, regulations. Here in Williamson County, we are very fortunate to have some of the most pristine and beautiful and cherished waters here in the state of Tennessee. Between the creeks and streams and rivers that flow within our boundaries, we're very fortunate. We get to play and fish and paddle, hunt animals that drink from this water, let our cattle and livestock feed from this water, and so on and so forth. Currently, there are developments in the area that are contributing to the damage and destruction of those pristine waters. And I try to avoid getting into any long discussion on that right now, but I do want to call to your attention the opportunity that you all have before you with regard to these new subdivision regulations. If I may, reading from page two, Article One of the proposed subdivision regulations, Item Seven and Eight states to prevent pollution of air streams and ponds, to assure adequacy of drainage facilities, to safeguard the water table, and to preserve the integrity, stability, beauty, and value of land within the jurisdictional area. Eight carries on to preserve the natural beauty and topography of the jurisdictional area and ensure appropriate development with regard to these natural features. That's a great start. That's a great start. And I think with a little bit of thought and maybe even consultation with either residents, engineers, heck, even some contractors, you might even be able to get a little bit more specific in breadth and terms. And then even go on a little bit further and provides the city some sort of teeth for enforcement of those exact policies and purposes. You know, I've stood in front of this committee previously and others imploring the city take up a stormwater ordinance. I've had that refuted back and several different reasons, but I think it's, this is an opportunity. And in my discussions with representatives from TDEC, this is a vehicle subdivision regulations and zoning ordinances. This is a vehicle that other cities within the county have used to have and develop some sort of way to manage and mitigate stormwater erosion, pollution of our area from developments. And, you know, recently, the city of Fairview has approved several large developments, and I know that it's not going to stop there. It's going to continue. And, you know, stopping that development is probably a lost cause already at this point, but I think the smart thing we can all do is have some method to, you know, we have building codes for reasons, to make sure that individuals aren't hurt within their own houses, to make sure that they have quality products. We need to go, I think, one step further and make sure that the environment isn't being destroyed in the process of building those homes. So I think I want to point you to the city of Nolansville. I believe they're one city within the county that have used their stormwater, that have used subdivision regulations and zoning ordinances as a vehicle to enact some method of controlling stormwater pollution, stormwater runoff, erosion controls, so forth. So, you know, I'd point to that. If anyone is interested in discussing with me, or I can even contact, put you in contact with representatives from TDEC that have actually pointed this very opportunity out to me in hopes that I would come and mention it to y'all and, you know, make sure you understand this is an opportunity to do that. So if you're at all interested in preserving waters and lands of Fairview, Williamson County, Tennessee, this is an opportunity I think you have before you, and I'll leave it at that. If anyone would like to contact me directly, I'd be more than willing to submit my contact info and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Just the one, right? Miss Stanza?
This one.
All right, we move to approval of minutes. December 11th, 2018, regular meeting.
Move to approve.
First, we have a second. Mr. Anderson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any posts? Thank you. Next, we'll move to the public hearing. Item one, PC 2019-01, resolution to adopt revised subdivision regulations for the city of Fairview, Tennessee. Mr. Potter, do I need to step out of this meeting and go to the public hearing? Or just have this open during the meeting? Is that correct? I'm asking for your advice. Do I need to close this meeting for the open hearing, or do I need to? We can have it in the meeting.
No, you can have it in the meeting.
Okay. So we'll start the, we'll start the public hearing now if anyone is here to speak on that, that item. So this is the revised subdivision regulations for the city of Fairview. Do we have anyone here tonight to speak on the? If we don't have anyone, we'll close the hearing and we'll move into new business. Item one on new business will be the election of officers. We do it the first of the year, every year, so we add it to our agenda tonight. We have a chair, a vice chair, a first secretary, and a second secretary. So we'll start at the chair position. We'll accept nominations and then we'll vote.
I'd make a motion that we reelect the current slate of officers for a new term.
Second.
Mr. Powers, is that a second? So we have a motion on the table to maintain all current positions. Is that correct? And we have a second. Is there any additional nominations? So we have a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any posts? Motion carries? That's simple. So congratulations to everyone. Get another round. Item two, site plan, 7,500 square foot industrial building requested by Fabline Incorporated. Property located at 7124 Loblawli Pine Road. Tax map 18, parcel 47.18, 2.33 acres. IG zoning district property owned by PV Enterprises LLC. Mr. Jenkins, if you could read the staff comments for me.
Absolutely. The proposed culvert for the emergency access drive will need to be lowered in order to provide sufficient cover over the top of the pipe.
Thank you, sir.
Was this the property that they kind of started before they did the tree count and stuff on?
Not to my recollection. I think that was down the right to the...
Okay.
Do we have an overhead on a computer that shows the site? I guess it's the end of the, if I'm correct, the pond would be to the left there, or the lake? What is that like? You know what I'm talking about? Fishing pond where the fishing area would be to the left of that.
Veterans Park?
Yes, Veterans Park. Yes, sir. Thank you. We have any discussion or questions? Is there a representative here tonight? Good evening. If you will, just state your name for me.
Good evening. Jared Gray, civil design consultants for the Civil Engineers in the project.
Sir?
We request approval, and I can answer any questions. We would agree with staff recommendation. If it needs to be lowered, we'll lower it.
Move to approve.
Second. Second, Mr. Kelly. Typically, it would be out of line, but if you want to make a quick comment, I think that that's fair. If you want to state your address, and if you want to come to the podium, just say a quick note for us.
Rob Riley, 7225 Braxton Bend Drive, Fairview.
Sir?
Just wanted to comment, the address is wrong in your minutes. It's Boulevard. So if you're going to make this something official, I think you should correct that.
Thank you, sir.
Also, in the minutes, the address is 7124 Loblawli Pine, and the blueprints all state that it's 7126 Loblawli Pine.
And 7126 is the correct.
All right, so we had a first and a second. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any posts? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item three, PC 2019-01, resolution to adopt revised subdivision regulations for the city of Fairview, Tennessee.
I'd move to defer to the next meeting. I received the final version, I believe, of this one today, and I was unable to make it through the entire thing. And I want to make sure I have ability to read it all before I vote on it. So that would be my request.
You have a motion for deferment?
I'll second that.
Second, Slaughter. I think if we can, maybe post it online to where it's accessible for everyone to read and review, and then perhaps we have another post for another public hearing next month, and so then people can discuss what they have time to review on there, if everyone's okay with them.
It's fair.
I do have one question. This, we was handed before the meeting, the stormwater management, is that part of the...
Not sure what this.
Mr. Powers, if I can answer that, Mr. Chairman. This was something I asked the planning director to put together, kind of a proposal of a stormwater ordinance or management, something that's not a full MS4 that we could try to look at incorporating. This would not be part of this. This would be separate. So this will need some work.
Well, the reason I asked was because it was Chapter 18, and I just wondered if it was supposed to be in...
Add it in.
Into that.
It is not yet.
Okay.
If it's something we end up working on and passing, then it could be included, but not as of right now.
Any additional discussion or questions? All in favor of deferment?
Aye.
Any posts? So we'll see that next month. Item four, actually, item five, request for recommendation of the board of commissioners on ordinance 2019, an ordinance to adopt revised zoning ordinance requested by the Fairview Planning Department.
I'd make a motion to defer this item as well. Again, actually, this is the one I received today. Subdivision regulations I received yesterday have not had the time to go through them all sufficiently to where I would feel comfortable voting on it, so it has to be deferred to next month's meeting.
Second, Mayor Blade. Any additional discussion?
I just have one question.
If you will, make sure your mic's on for me, Mr. Anderson.
I just have one question. As we move along after we adopt the ordinance, there will be open, we can change it or modify it as we, as we run across issues as we go along, correct?
I think Mr. Owen probably gave you a good answer there.
Sure. You're, both documents, the subdivision regulations and the zoning ordinance are always open for modification according to proper procedures.
What I figured.
And just for everyone's clarity, the versions that were received most recently are not any different, materially different than the ones that you've, that have been disseminated amongst workshops and at meetings over the past couple of months. So I didn't want anyone to think that there was an expectation for approval of documents that were just received in the last few days. The most recent ones did have some typographical corrections and chart, you know, references and that sort of thing, but the material content of those documents has not changed over the last probably six, almost eight weeks now.
There? Thank you. Any additional discussion or questions? All in favor of deferment?
Aye.
Any posts? Thank you. All right, well, we move to item six, review and recommendation on revised preliminary master development plan for Richland Estates requested by the Fairview Board of Commissioners. Yeah, Mr. Jenkins, if you will, read in staff comments for us.
Per the minutes from the November 2018 Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission voted eight to one to approve the rezoning request and preliminary master development plan for Richland Estates contingent upon the following conditions: an additional trail outlet, all sides of the homes to be of masonry product, trails to be constructed of crusher-run material, stream protection, and provision of a second entrance to the multipurpose fields. SEC made these changes, and the rezoning request and preliminary master development plan went before the Board of Commissioners on January 3rd, 2019, for first reading. The Board of Commissioners discussed at length the rezoning request and the master development plan with most commentary surrounding two items: the need for parking to serve the improved amenities and the access point to Lake Road. The Board of Commissioners made a motion to approve the rezoning request and master plan on first reading, but requested that SEC revise the plan with those two items in mind and send them back to the Planning Commission for review and recommendation. The newly revised plan before the Planning Commission shows three parking spaces, plus an ADA handicap parking space, and loading zone between the proposed tot lot and pavilion, plus two entrance options for Lake Road, one with emergency access only utilizing crashgates and fencing, the option shown on the master plan that the Planning Commission recommended previously, and one with standard road section, a 50-foot right-of-way between lots 27 and 28 tapering to a 30-foot right-of-way, including two nine-foot lanes and two six-foot shoulders with connection to Lake Road.
Thank you, sir. So in short, the Board of Commissioners reviewed this at their meeting last Thursday night. Their two points of contention, they approved, so there'll be a second reading with the Board of Commissioners. Their two points of contention that they wanted our feedback on would have been the additional parking spaces and ADA handicap parking space in the loading zone by the tot lot and pavilion. And then also, they were interested on trying to make that Lake Road entrance a second entrance into the neighborhood. And so they wanted to send it back to us for our input on those two things of what we, what we would recommend or decide. Since we've already voted and approved this, we just want to send them back with some feedback on these things. And then the applicant has submitted, you can see on the screens now, the parking area, and then he submitted two pictures of the entry with the current gate configuration that we saw two months ago, and then without the gate, like the BOC had requested.
I'll move to approve.
So we want to try and give feedback to the board. I don't know. Mr. Potter, is it unnecessary, should there be an action or a motion of approval, or should we, I guess we could approve the feedback we want to send back to them?
I think in whatever form you want to approve the feedback to send back, I think that it was really a matter of deference to you as the Planning Commission, which is, you guys have spent a whole lot of time on reviewing these, this plan, and I know these developers have been before you several times, and you've reviewed a lot of changes and asked for a lot of changes. These were a couple of changes that were not requested of Planning Commission. And so the Board of Commissioners discussed those two things at length. Not real sure what the will of the Board of Commissioners is yet. I think they own those two items, but it was suggested by one or more of the commissioners, and they wanted it sent back to you to get your thoughts about whether or not you thought those were necessary.
Sir?
Well, in the original, in the original meeting, I was all in for that main road going out to Lake, you know, because somewhere, it's all going to change, so having a road there now instead of putting one in later, you know, it's kind of like 196 is better to expand them now, or 40, the sooner you do it, the better off you are. So putting a regular road in instead of a emergency road would probably be better.
I think, and just to kind of where we've come from on this, I think if it was a full 50-foot right-of-way, the staff probably would have sent it to us with an access road over there. I think we would have had two entrances to the neighborhood. That's what I took away from the staff meeting. Since there's only a 30-foot right-of-way, there's not enough width to have a true road to city standards, so the curb and gutter, city sidewalks, and so as it hits that property line, it's going to go from 30-foot to 50-foot, or 50-foot to 30-foot, vice versa. So that road's not going to have the full width that it has on the neighborhood side, and so that road would not be to the city standards all the way through. It would be missing either sidewalks or curb and gutter, or the lanes wouldn't be as wide. And so that's where it kind of, I guess it stuck on me, is if you say, okay, let's do a 30-foot road, and then it bumps out to 50, will the next person ask for a 30-foot road, or, you know, if our, if our standard is 50-foot, I think that's why it was presented to us as just an emergency access, because it wasn't going to be wide enough to have active traffic both ways, and have your city sidewalks, and have your curb and gutter and drainage, so that's just...
And there was, one of the other issues we discussed was putting that traffic on Lake Road. Would Lake Road being as unimproved as it kind of is? I was driving it today, and I was, knew this was on the agenda, and as you go down through there, and you got your wheels right on the edge of the road, and you meet somebody, and they got there and put extra traffic on there without improvements is...
There was even discussions of trying to get creative, of possibly doing a one-way in the morning and a one-way in the afternoon, or only make it an entry, or things like that, just trying to find solutions, since it is, once it hits that property line, it turns to 30 feet. You can kind of see where it goes from the 50-foot with the sidewalks and cuts down to the 30.
Mr. Chairman, were we currently open to discussion?
Yes, sir.
With ourselves? I haven't had an opportunity, I don't even think they exist, but to read through the minutes from the Board of Commissioners meeting. What was the intention behind the parking around the pavilion and the tot lot?
It was similar to some of the discussion that we had in this meeting, was if your tot lot's down there at the end of a cul-de-sac, or your walking trail access is down at the end of a cul-de-sac, the only place to park is going to be at the end of that cul-de-sac. And so then you're preventing, you know, fire trucks or emergency vehicles from getting down into those cul-de-sacs, so they were going to, they would like to see parking areas, and also the handicap area, where if somebody wanted to park and unload some toys or bags of equipment and things like that, it's kind of a safer area to be able to pull off and have that done. And Mayor Blade or Commissioner Burks, if you guys have any additional to add from y'alls meeting last week?
One, looking at this drawing, it appears I actually missed this earlier, is that the mail kiosk is also in this pavilion. If you've got people coming in checking their mail, most people probably going to do it about the same time when they get off work. I'm not sure how that's going to work real well. People just park down the side of this road so they can go check their mail, in addition to people wanting to use the tot lot and whatever else they may be. I don't think that three spots are going to be sufficient, especially when you add in that mail kiosk area, which I know is a new requirement that they're doing, odd, but whatever. Plus, again, the idea is if you've got people with small children, trying to unload them, instead of trying to carry baby all the way over there, you want to be able to park, unload, and use those areas, it just makes more sense to maybe have a little more parking versus what's being provided here. That's my thought, but that was one of the concerns is if everybody, I know the idea was, well, the idea is people to walk there, and they can be healthier, which is great if you're between, you know, 20 and 30, as we discussed, but you're going to have a wide range of ages and abilities, and probably won't be able to use the entire development that they're helping pay for by buying a home, so we want them to have access to it. We want them to be able to park there. Seems like three spots probably not sufficient. That's just my thought.
Commissioner Burks, I'd like to piggyback off that, if you don't mind. If we start with the why behind everything, so looking at the pavilion, why do we have a pavilion? What's the purpose of the pavilion? It's for people to gather together, right? So how many people are we expecting to gather under that 30-foot by 30-foot pavilion? If that amount of people that we expect to gather in a 30-by-30-foot pavilion, plus the amount of people that we expect to gather at a tot lot at any given time, equals what you can fit within three vehicles to park? Like, that would make sense, right? That would fit. But I feel like you would have more people wanting to show up for an event that you're holding at a pavilion than what three parking spaces would allow for. So I agree with your sentiment that there probably should be additional parking. Also, if I'm holding an event at the pavilion, I don't want people coming up checking their mail while I'm trying to hold my family gathering or whatever in there. I think that's just a poor place for a mail kiosk.
Ms. Reed?
Yes, sir. If I may, I think the other night, I think we're, I think we're going off on a tangent here. I think the, the meeting the other night was to introduce this, to get y'all's opinion, one, on the, either put the gate up there or take the gate away, and then possibly add some parking spaces. This is kind of for our construction plans to bring back to y'all to have a site plan for the pavilion type stuff. This is just in general to ask y'all's permission to add parking spaces over there. I agree, you know, I just threw the mail kiosk on there because that's a brand-new requirement. I don't think y'all've got any subdivision standards yet. I don't think anybody has for the mail kiosk, but I just threw that in there to place it there. It don't have to be placed there. They don't require parking spaces, even though, depending on how y'all do your subdivision regulations for those. But the intent was, I guess, to ask y'all if y'all were okay with a minor change of adding parking spaces there, and then with a gate or without a gate on the access drive. Correct me if I'm wrong. No? And the parking spaces, we can add one, two, seven, eight, you know, at construction plan, and, you know...
I'm happy to reserve that conversation for the next meeting that me and you attend, and we can deal with it then. That's fine. I'm trying to be helpful and maybe give you a heads up on how I'm thinking.
And if y'all got a number that y'all think, right now, there's no number for mail kiosks. There's typically what we're placing in other jurisdictions, one or two spaces for mail kiosks.
I've got one question. On the mail kiosk, when I've been involved with them, we usually made it where the traffic could either flow around them... made it where the traffic could either flow around them, because people stop and get out, get their mail, and they get going again in about three to five minutes. But, I fought the postal service for years over this issue. The regional postmasters have been pushing this for a long time.
Yeah.
For their budgets. But, the national postmaster has, to my knowledge, has not come out and demanded that this occur.
No, they have. Yeah.
And so, I think if, if anybody wanted to just fight this just a little bit, this would not have to occur. These are things that are atrocious for subdivisions.
Oh, I, I agree.
And should not be imposed.
I agree, but they're, they are requiring this. Every jurisdiction I'm dealing with right now, that's a huge ordeal, with subdivisions under construction right now. They're coming back in and mandating that we place mail kiosks on anything, seven lots or more. So, we don't have a choice. And a lot of jurisdictions are getting hit with this, with no subdivision regulations whatsoever, and, and subdivisions are already built. If they have not platted, they're making you put mail kiosks on. So, you got to go, after subdivisions approved and built, and not platted, yet final plat stage, they're making us put, place those in. And it's a huge fight. The only time we've been successful with removing that is if it's the last section of an existing subdivision. They've grandfathered this in with, with a letter from the postmaster.
But not the national postmaster.
Yeah, they've come out with, with letters to all the engineering firms that tell us we have to place mail kiosks. Some jurisdictions, Williamson County is not even, they're not even acknowledging this. They're not making us show it on the construction plans or anything. It's up to the developers to figure out a place to place it. Rutherford County's making us do something just like this. You know, it, it varies from city to county.
Thank you.
So, I think the kiosk is throwing just a little more into it. So, I think the consensus is what, is what I'm reading, is we would tell the BOC, yes, we think parking spaces should be there, maybe even some additionals now that the mail kiosk is, is coming to play. And so, unless anybody else has any discussion of that, we could, we could say, because this is just the rezoning. They'll have site plans, construction plans that we'll have a chance to review and see. But, we can tell the BOC, we think, yep, parking should be there, and we think maybe even more than what's currently shown, just for their review, if everybody agrees on that. And then, now we'll talk about the...
And then a gate on the road.
And then we'll talk about the road, what the consensus is, is there.
Could you just go right near that island?
Mr. Chairperson?
Sir?
I, I know some of the discussion, as far as the road at our, the BOC meeting, was that a lot of people seem to want that second entrance/exit to try to divert some of that traffic, instead of it all being concentrated right there on Cox Pike, especially because it's, it's a very large subdivision. And, and I appreciate the fact that there was an effort to try to put in an emergency lane, or emergency entrance in, in that case that's needed. However, that discussion seemed to be, there's a preference to have that second road, even if it's a one-way, you know, for the morning, after, however you want to try to work that best. But, i- it is just a feeling of, that, that's a concern. And that's why, one reason they wanted it to come back and have the discussion here. What does this board think? What's preferable? Understand that there's an issue of, of the right-of-way, but just give you a general idea.
You, Major Collins?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bell, members of the board, we, we had a chance to look at this today. Staff did, and come up with, with a couple of options within these for consideration moving forward. As it relates to the pavilion itself, the discussion that we came to as a solution today would be to consider the capacity of that pavilion, which I believe is open-air, which it's still going to have some capacity rated for whatever that is, and suggest to the BOC and to this body, that the standard for parking be used is what the standard would be under the current subdivision regulations for parking based on capacity, or potential capacity. So, if you had square foot in capacity for any, any development or any other building, that's what we would, we would request that be done in this manner. Be before, six, 10, whatever the number is, whatever currently meets the subdivision regulations for capacity under that roof would be our, our suggestion to move forward there. As it relates to the access road, we understand from a staff standpoint that that, that's 30 feet for a portion of that. In looking at the drawings and what was discussed, there were nine-foot lane widths that were discussed on a 30-foot right-of-way. Our preference would be that we construct 11-foot lanes on the 30 feet, given the fact that we understand we only have 30 feet there. The consideration for that was that nine-foot lane is the width of the standard parking space, which would not allow for travel lanes in two directions where there is need for travel lane in two directions. So, our concern would be if we're going to use that as such, or be constructed in such a manner that it be driven on, that it be constructed on in such a manner that both lanes were usable at the same time. So, our request from a public safety standpoint, outside of the gate, which is another issue, would be that the 30-foot right-of-way would be accepted in such a way that the travel lanes were 11-foot wide for a total of 22 feet of pavement. If there were to be considerations for curb and gutter, then you could curb and gutter, and you would have to forego the remaining space, the 20 feet, 10-foot on either side, until such time as the city or some other entity could acquire that property. But, from a standard access standpoint, we would request 11-foot lane widths be constructed within that 30 feet. It just makes sense for the use of it going forward. Forever's a long time, and we want to be safe in what we're requesting that we would, we would bring about. So, our, our suggestion would be the 30-foot, the 30-foot right-of-way, which will be dedicated to the city, constructed as 11-foot lane widths with curb and gutter.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Yeah, well, if, if you go to 11-foot, which I think's a good idea, you're going to have to look at the turning radius going out on Lake Road, because right now, the way it's drawn and designed, it just goes straight out. There's no turning radius onto that, that Lake, Lake Road. So, that would have to be adjusted, I would think, as well.
Are we currently discussing the gate as well, and whether or not we want to make this a regular access point, or just an emergency access point?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
I guess I'll start. My opinion hasn't changed since November, so I just can't in good conscience approve a second entrance way that's going to be regularly, regular use on the Lake Road. That road's far too dangerous to add in access for 141 families. So, I recommend leaving it as an emergency access point only.
I disagree.
I think it needs to be a full road. I think somewhere, Lake Road's going to have to be fixed down the road, too, guys. I mean, it's not going to stay, you know, a bad road forever. So, you know, if we're going to do it, we should do it right, right out of the gate. Instead of, you know, it's going to be a limited access, and then, five years down the road, we change it to a full-access road, and you're spending more money then, you know? Just do it right out of the gate.
Good point. Will the, will the road itself get changed, or will the physical, like, is it, is it really just a matter of gate or no gate?
Yeah.
Or is there a question to the actual design of the road itself?
I think the intention was it would be fully paved in, in 30 feet, or as designed, and there would be an access gate emergency-only, or it would be a full road. So, it would be built the same way either way? Is it just, because of a minute, Mr. Collins, do you have any?
No, sir, only with, with consideration of the access gate. Our concern today, and I apologize, I was out of town last, last week. I missed the BOC meeting. Have children, sometimes that happens. The, our concern is that this is going to be dedicated to the city at some point. So, 100 of this is going to be, 100% will be owned by the city. Part of the concern that we have is the liability of an access gate. If we were accessing private property, and there are, there is a subdivision in town currently that is private property managed by an access gate, that puts that liability, or at least some portion of that liability, on the private property owners of that subdivision or HOA. Given that this is going to be a public street, that's going to be constructed in that way, we, we have a bit of an issue from a liability standpoint and accessibility standpoint, installing a, a, basically a private access, emergency access only, on a public right-of-way roadway, if that makes any sense. So, as we get into that, there, there is some concern there.
What about, you'll have public sidewalks that just end into private property, if, if the, the width's not as full, or, you know, now the city will take on the burden of having to acquire that property eventually one day if our intent is to make it a full width, or?
At some point, that, that would be your only option, if you were to do that. The only other option, and I would not suggest this, if you were to do the 30 feet, would have a zero lot line on one side of the road, so you'd have access on one side of the road for sidewalk on one side. If you were to move all of the pavement and curb and gutter to the property line, again, we're not in favor of that. If you were to do 11-foot lanes, that's 22 feet. Curb and gutter's going to add four feet, that's 26. That leaves you two feet on either side of the road, for some access back and forth. The other consideration for the sidewalk-specific question is, we know that for the foreseeable future, there's going to be no sidewalk access on Lake Road. If there were sidewalks along Lake Road, and we're, and we're connecting sidewalk to sidewalk, we would probably not be in favor of that. But, given the fact we don't have that now, our discussion today, discussions today were err on side of accessibility for, for vehicle traffic rather than the foot traffic, which to this point, would not have an access lane anywhere to go to, even if we had the 50 feet. So, that's where, how we arrived at that discussion today.
If this was going to be a road, would there need to be a traffic study done on it?
Did the traffic study include?
For site, for site, and all that type of thing. I mean, I know the other thing got talked to death going on the Cox Pike about the traffic study. Would we need the same thing going on the Lake Road?
Did that traffic study include that access on Lake?
Well, it did, but I, I'm not, actually not sure if, did it include with the ga, I'm not sure if it included with the gate or not. But, we did turn it in with that access point and the other one. But, the, the front entrance ours is our main focal point. That's where we're assuming everything's going out. That's why we're, even though the traffic report said, no, it wasn't required, we put a turn lane, we're, we're basically saying, yes, we're going to put a turn lane there, because the two entrances that, that were up closed to make it safe. But, that's kind of our main focal point of the subdivision. But, yes, we did do a traffic report, and it showed both of them.
Also, that, I'm sorry, but also, during that, on that, on that 30-foot, my suggestion is to also to speed the flow of, of, you know, the speeds going through there, maybe put some speed bumps, just to, you know, slow that down till they enter the subdivision at the 50-foot. I think, I think it'd be wise to put the speed bumps in, just to, just to slow the traffic down, you know, like they should, instead of somebody, you know, people being a little heavy on the foot going out to Lake, you know, to Lake Road. So, I think if, if this board suggests that, that, that's, is made a public road, I think that that's also needs to be taken into consideration, putting speed bump in.
Sir?
I would be in favor of a speed hump. There's a lot difference between a speed hump and a speed bump. And I would, I would recommend a speed hump, which is better on the car and, and safety for everyone.
Full traffic?
Yes.
So, as a, just act of clarity, so Commissioner Callie was talking about with making this a full road in anticipation that later on, Lake Road actually gets improved and developed. That doesn't change anything with the road design itself, right? Right now, with 11-foot lane widths, with the 30-foot right-of-way, everything that Mr. Collins presented to us, if we wouldn't change anything at all, it's just a matter of whether or not this is emergency, or whether or not this is regular use. That's all we're deciding on right now, correct?
I believe that is correct.
So, to address Commissioner Callie's concerns, then, the road would be fully developed and ready, and just in case Lake Road would get improved later on, correct?
It would be the same width, same, same pavement, but...
Nothing would need changed in that situation.
Yeah, but there, there's not going to be a gate on it, because the gate's going to be a liability. So, it's going to be wide open, so people can leave there anyway. So, the road would be there, people would be able to go back and forth.
Well, that's the discussion, is gate or no gate, is what we're supposed to send back for.
And we're saying the gate is a liability to the city. So, we don't want a liability to the city.
Gate's a liability to a city? The gate itself, not allowing people to go through there on a regular basis, is a liability if we own that as a city?
We're not concerned about whether or not they can get into it as a matter of course of traffic during the day. We're concerned about the functionality of it in the event of an emergency.
Okay.
That, that's our concern.
So, in an emergency, then, the crash gate is exactly what it's there for, right? That's, it's, that's its purpose for emergency access, correct?
We're, we're anti-crash gate as a matter of accessing a property.
Okay.
On public access. We don't think that is, we don't think that's worthy activity. We're, we're not suggesting include the road or don't include the road. That's not, that's not where we are. Our concern is the consideration of a crash gate, as we call it, or some other thing, if the sole purpose of that access is for public safety. And if the sole purpose of the access is public safety, we fear that the act, the action of a gate could become a liability in, in that circumstance.
Interesting.
Were they directed in that direction from our staff? Isn't that our recommendation, the crash gate? Isn't that how we got there?
I'm, I'm...
Because we didn't want it there, I mean, some of us didn't want it there to begin with. The only reason we put the road in was for emergency access.
Understood.
Yeah.
I, I get that. We're, we're just, in, in, in going back and looking at this and seeing where that is, we just had some concern about that. It is a part of standard access on public right-of-way, to get there, and, and the consideration of a crash gate or some other functioning device, we just, that's our concern. Whatever the, the board chooses to do, certainly they can choose to do. But, we do have some concern about that, that activity.
Okay. Okay, so some speed humps and no gate.
Additionals, Mr. Power?
I, I kind of get back to the deal where you go on there. That's, and I drove out there and back twice today, trying to figure out exactly where this was going to come out, because there's curves, there's low spot. I don't know where it's coming out at, and I tried to look which one of these houses has got a place in it big enough. And I don't know these names of these people, so I really can't, I don't know what lot i- is what out there. But, it's just, that turn, and it just seems really square and awkward right there to, for, to turn in and out of that road. One way, you're almost turning all the way back. If you're coming from Lake Road and want to turn in there, you've got to turn more than 90 degrees to turn in there. You're turning probably 100 degrees or, or more. I mean, it, it's turning back.
Excuse me, that, what, I think what, what is deceiving on that picture, it's actually right-of-way. That's not the pavement. I think you alluded to that earlier, and I apologize. That's actually the right-of-way, basically the 50-foot, the existing 50-foot right-of-way on that road with the, with the 30-foot right-of-way tent into it. We just stopped the pavement there. But, it'll, it'll progress out a little bit, and we'll be able to put our radiuses in.
Okay.
To better take, to better transition the pavement to pavement. I, I don't want...
Because, because when I'm looking at, you know, when you look at that, it's like, you come down there, and then you have to turn back farther than a, a, a 90-degree turn.
If the, if the topic of concern is public safety, we've, I, I, I'm totally making an assumption here, and I understand that. But, emergency responders are probably going to respond more if we allow access on the Lake Road from there due to crashes, than they would use to go into that crash gate to get into the back part of the neighborhood. I feel like if we put this on the Lake Road, there's going to be so many accidents that you know, emergency responders are going to have to respond to. So, if it's a matter of public safety and public concern, like, don't let people go in and on Lake Road, period, until Lake Road is improved.
How, and, and I'm drawing a blank on this. How far from this entrance does Lake Road connect on, on to Cox Pike? How far away is that?
It's a road.
Because there's a good chance people are going to take it anyway. If they're, depending on where you're, which way you're going, you may go down Cox Pike. We're going to put more traffic onto Lake Road with the subdivision being there. I think that's just what's going to occur.
I think that's fair. Most people probably leave there and take a left on the lake to go to Highway 96.
Allowing direct access may limit somewhat how much of Lake Road they're going to be using, though. It, it may not. It just, so, I'll just consider the fact that it, it's going to occur, because people are going to use that to skip around. The question is, do we make it more user-friendly? Question is, do we make it more user-friendly by having that second access that's full?
Yeah, for me, just forgive me if I haven't been clear enough. My concern is not increased traffic on Lake Road. That is going to happen naturally, like you said, with going in and out of Cox Pike. That's the easiest way to get to forty from there. I take Lake Road all the time. The problem is people slowing down to make a turn into the neighborhood and then people leaving to get onto Lake Road from the neighborhood. That's my concern. I think that's where something's going to happen, if anything's going to happen at all. There are far too many blind spots on that road with the curves and the speed at which people travel on that road. It's just, it's not fit for having an entrance to an one-hundred-and-forty-one-hole neighborhood on that road.
If you proceed with making that a road, I think you can make a recommendation to the board to ask them to do a line of sight or at the entry or some kind of study to ensure that it's a, you know, a proper turn on it. I don't know if anyone wants to make a motion. We can try and vote. I think we're pretty split.
I have one item I would like to add. Just going back to parking spaces. I understand what the city manager was suggesting. However, it's not just parking spaces for the pavilion. It's parking spaces for the pavilion. It's parking spaces for the tot lot. It's parking spaces to get to the multi-use fields. So I don't think just doing that calculation based upon the pavilion is going to be sufficient. So it would probably need to be more than just that one spot because it's serving multiple purposes. So that might be something you want to take into consideration.
Could I ask you, I just want to make sure while we're brainstorming here, what is, what's your vision then of, are you thinking spitballing somebody? Are you thinking ten spaces or, you know, forty spaces?
I don't.
It's not, because that's not what we're trying to create. We don't want a parking lot. We want a, just a handful of spaces is.
I think, my personal thought, ten is a lot better
Yeah.
than maybe one, however many.
Okay, now that, okay, that's reasonable. Okay, yeah, yes, sir. I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page.
It's not just that one thing. And if you are considering putting the mailboxes there, it, they would be using up some of those spaces. So just, just something that makes more sense.
And that may be where one of the mailboxes are. Now, we wind up having, they're going to be scattered throughout. They're typically, they're supposed to be selected with each section of the subdivision. So if you do section one, you got twenty lots. There's got to be a mail kiosk somewhere on those twenty lots. So the next twenty lots, it's got to be a mail kiosk. And there's a mail kiosk kind of, so you don't want a bunch of parking spaces scattered all throughout your subdivision for mail kiosks. You know what I mean? It's not just like there. I just threw that on there so you could see kind of, we're going to put it there because it actually would be a kind of central corridor for, or an area, so.
I was just hoping to save you a little time and effort.
Thank you. I got your point. I got.
I have one question. On that, while you have that drawn, the land between the tot lot and the pavilion, is that land suitable to go on deeper into?
Well, that's, well, there's a, I can do some maneuvering in there. That's where one of the detention ponds are that we'll discharge into the creeks and stuff. So that lot is a nice-sized lot, but it, you know, you're talking about further back.
Yeah, behind the kiosk, if you went in that direction, is there room for additional parking back in?
No, sir. No, sir, not really. That's where the detention pond is.
Starts, okay.
Yes, sir. I can go down the road like he's suggesting, towards the creek and add some along the road, you know, like ten spaces, you know, five here or four here or something like that, so I could get kind of everything kind of centralized. You know, so like he said, you can get to the multipurpose fields, you can get the mail kiosks, tot lot type stuff. But we're still focusing on people walking, so we'd rather see, you know, them use those gravel fields that we got, the trails that we're building, so.
I understand. Thank you.
But one question. What you're saying is, there's not going to be a hundred-and-forty mailboxes at that one kiosk?
No, no, sir. I'm sorry for the confusion. I just thought when I was drawing that up, I thought I might as well throw it there if we're adding parking spaces. That'd be an ideal spot for it. But a lot of these subdivisions where they don't, developers don't have the chance to come back and add parking spaces and stuff, they're having to add them on lot lines, you know, behind a corner lot or something, you know, stick in a mail kiosk for, you know, forty lots somewhere. They don't have, there's no, because of curves and the subdivision is built, you know, they're trying to retrofit a box. So I just wanted to show it on there and give, you know, I probably should, I don't know if I should put the cart before the horse on the whole thing, but.
I'm going to attempt to make a motion here that makes sense.
Yes, sir.
I would make a motion that we approve the addition of parking spaces by the tot lot and pavilion with a number to be determined by the developer. And that the secondary access be a full-service road with eleven-foot wide lanes with no gate.
That's a motion for our recommendation to the board. Is there a second? There's a motion for the recommendation of the parking lots, I mean, the parking spots, and then for the road to be a full-service road. And this is just going, this is just going to the board for their recommendation, for their consideration to their, at their next reading. Any additional discussion?
You didn't add no gate.
A no gate, yeah, full-service road, yes, sir.
Do we have to do a variance on that, changing that?
Sure. Second was Anderson. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Carries. All right. Thank you, guys. We'll move to bonds and letters of credit. Scarborough Village, Phase Three, request to set new bond amount to facilitate future recording of final plat. Original bond was set on February twelfth, two thousand eight, and is currently in the amount of fifty-two thousand. Mr. Jenkins, if you could read City Com.
The developer is requesting that the final plat be recorded at this time. Based on a review of as-built drawings and a site observation conducted on May twenty-third, two thousand eighteen, the city engineer recommends a new bond amount of two-hundred-and-three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. That's calculated by taking one-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand multiplied by one-point-two-five, and that's where you get the two-oh-three-seven-fifty, to cover the remaining work, including grading, including the detention pond at sixty thousand, removal of excess material, twelve thousand dollars, erosion control measures, fifteen thousand dollars, drainage infrastructure, fifteen thousand dollars, sidewalks, eighteen thousand dollars, roadway repair and patching, twenty-five thousand dollars, and final asphalt topping, eighteen thousand dollars.
Thank you, sir. Reverend, yes, sir. State your name for me.
Thomas Smootson.
Thank you, sir.
Come on. I was looking over his things and it's really, no justification for what he's asking. I have a bid on the road for eighteen thousand dollars. The pipes, he said there was pipes there. Most of those have been removed. What's there now is the drainage. I've been a while getting it in because I can't get anybody to come and do this small of a job. And it was ten thousand dollars to build it. I bought all the pipes and stuff. It was eight thousand dollars to build it. He said something about the dirt. And what I do on a sudden, when I'm doing it, I take all the good dirt and push it up in a pile. And then when I build my houses, I take that dirt and push all the way around those houses. And that way, I don't lose my topsoil. If I leave my topsoil on my, on my lots, I lose, you just lose your topsoil. It gets all turned under. So that's one, and I didn't really look at all of it. But the bid and the prices were just so outrageous. I mean, it wouldn't care that kind of money to do the whole development over. It's not but seven-hundred-and-fifty feet of road under it. And I mean, I'm, I don't mind being fair, but this is, that's kind of, it was, the bond I had last time I come in and asked for lots was sufficient, and I don't understand why it still isn't sufficient. I've got forty percent. Forty, forty percent of the sidewalks already in. There's more work done now than it was then. And I just would really be devastated on that kind of bond, on that small of a thing. And they dropped, you know, I had a better bond and the city said, I've done enough to take care of it. And they lowered it. And now they're trying to raise it and I don't, it's, I don't understand it. And the pipe that he talked about, mostly it's gone. I carried it to another job I got to help. There is pipe on it now that is the retained, I had, basically delivered it about three weeks ago on the detention pond. And then the big old box I got out there, they delivered it last week and that goes in the middle of the, it's a catch basement on top of it. Everything's been inspected and all the inspectors, the road guy, said everything was fine, the sidewalks. I don't do anything without them coming out there and looking and, you know, and giving me a okay, that it's okay to do it. And I don't, the, there's not enough sidewalks there. It's cost me about five hundred dollars a house if you figure it out because the lots are, some of them are not thirty. Oh, there's some twenty-eight foot. So you got a sixteen-foot driveway. So you've got a very small portion and is a, is sidewalk in it. And I sure don't want to put those in right now because if you run, put the sidewalks in like they're doing over in Franklin now, then you're getting construction equipment. You'll tear them all to pieces on top of them. All the curbing's in, the water's been in. I done him a long time ago and had to pull out. And Dixon has all that, so I don't understand why we're jumping from fifty-two and they're trying to make it two-hundred. I mean, I want to do what's right and I don't, I'm not going to walk off. And he said, the trailer is, that's my office. We eat lunch there. I mean, that, we ain't got a place, that's where our microwave is. And then we got a little refrigerator in there too to go in there and eat. And I have, since we don't have a hardware store, I have to have some place. Boy, I wish y'all had a hardware store. And the, I have to carry enough of my material. If I didn't, I had to run to Dixon or Franklin and that is very, very hard for me to do. And I'm not like most builders. I'm working. I get out on the job and I just dug a foot in the day. Over there, I got two more permits. I can fix, pull two more. So, you know, I just, I sure need some help.
I don't know if the staff wants to comment or anything, but just kind of hearing you speak it out, it definitely sounds like it probably isn't ready for a final plat recorded. You know, you're talking about your active pieces still getting dropped for your drainage and things like that. So I don't know if it's final and I don't know if the staff has any additional comments from those. We should, I think the city of Fairview, it's our job to ensure that the city of Fairview doesn't get left with the bill to try and fix it. And if that's an assessment, maybe it's a high assessment, we want to make sure that we have what it takes to get it up to the standards that are in place. If anyone would like, have any additional questions or?
There's more. My bid on the thing today, and I've had a tough time getting it because it's such a small job. Nobody would come and do it and they got to bring a big machine in there to move that, that concrete. Lots I never got done loading. And I just got a guy in the last week that said he'd do it for me. And I've been trying for eight months. But everybody's so busy that nobody wanted that small job.
Yeah.
And I mean, I begged people, told them I'd double pay them and they wouldn't do it. They just didn't have the time.
Yes, sir.
I was kind of curious.
I was a bit curious when I saw this number and the increase. But then when you look at it, that's a two thousand and eight number versus a two thousand and eighteen number. I can speak from experience. Things are a lot more expensive now than they were in twenty, or two thousand and eight, especially construction-wise. I'm sure you're running into that. I think that's part of the problem is, like you're saying, to get someone to come out and do something, you're throwing money at them and they're not wanting to do it. The problem is, we would have that same issue. So we're having to build in costs to get someone to come out and do that. If I'm not mistaken, that might be part of why it's so high. Mr. Owens, can you explain how you came up with these numbers?
In a nutshell, these numbers represent if the plat was recorded tomorrow and no other, if the plat was recorded tomorrow, January?
Ninth.
Ninth. And on January tenth, for whatever reason, the developer sold all the remaining lots. And then on January eleventh, all the people that bought those lots said, I need my, I need the infrastructure built so I can actually build a house. Then that number represents what I believe would be required of the city to go in and have that, that infrastructure finalized and completed so that those lots would be considered buildable lots for those individuals that purchased those lots. So while I understand that the costs that are shown on this paper before you tonight are not, and are not intended to be anywhere near what his true costs are. That's not what our role is in establishing a bond amount. Our role is to make sure, Mr. Butler, as you mentioned, that if for whatever reason bankruptcy or market fails or just go a different direction, that the city is on the hook for the completion of the remaining work, that we've got enough in a bond amount to make sure that that's covered and that the taxpayers aren't covering for the completion of that work. So that's where the numbers come from. The fifty-two thousand, I don't, at that time in two thousand and eight, was established based on the final plat not necessarily being recorded, but basically, in essence, as you've heard me say in other situations, in essence, a stabilization-type bond. So Mr. Smith, or Mr. Smithson has the opportunity to proceed with the work that is shown on our list. And as that work is completed, then we can mark that amount off of what a bond amount would be. There's nothing that's preventing, on the city's side, that's preventing the work from continuing to be done. The only thing that I would suggest is that we would not move forward with recording a final plat that establishes those lots legally and therefore they could be sold without some more protection in order to make sure the city's covered.
Well, the bank's not going to let me have a two-hundred-thousand-dollar bond for that. I'll tell you that right now. I'm stuck in the hard spot if that be the case. I can bring you bids on what it's cost me to get them done. I will get them done. I'm working on it right now. I'm not going to walk off and leave that. I've owned that land for thirty years almost. And, or since ninety-nine, however long it's been. I'm not a big builder. Two or three houses, four houses at a time. I think I built eight because I built those, finished those condos last year. I don't want to build twenty houses. I'm not going to sell them. I've done had opportunity. They come begging me to buy them. Ten men of them even wanted to buy some. And I don't want to sell them. I'll do a few at a time and that's just the way I'm going to do it, you know? And we're working on the drainage right now, but I don't want to move the dirt to get the bond load because that dirt moves out as I do the houses. I could sell every bit of that dirt right now. It's safety, it can't approve. Almost four hundred dollars a load every, and there's probably ten, twenty loads, thirty loads in there. Only, and I could, I could sell every bit of it, but I don't want to do it because I need it for my, you know, to put on my road. I mean, my houses, where the grass should grow. After you get down about a foot in Fairview, the grass don't grow. It ain't much air to grow. But I sure wish y'all would hit me out because it's going to put me in a, in a world, you know, I'm working on getting it done. And I see it being done within soon. But, I mean, if you make me move the dirt, and how much you got in on that dirt? What was the price you put in on it?
Well, the line item is removal of excess material. At the time that the site observation was made, when requested, which was back in, Kristen, I think, May, or maybe even on here, May twenty-third, there was just a number of excess pipe material and building, just, it's more, it's not just the dirt. I understand that there's a desire to keep topsoil on site and. topsoil on site, and that's understood. But there's, there's significant grading that has to occur, including, like you said, the construction of a detention pond. We would, as a city, we would be, certainly want to make sure that we were properly controlling any erosion from that site, and would be required to get that permitted through TDEC, as has been alluded to previously tonight. There's a reason why this is the last section of the development, and that's because it's the most costly to develop. And so that's where we are tonight.
I've got all the structure and everything in, the roads to this. You know, I'm not going to just walk off and leave this and sell it. I mean.
Put the opportunities there. I think we just have to be covered.
Well, $200,000 is a little to the extreme. I mean, you know, I don't, I don't know if he's doing it on a state job, or what it costs to do things, and it just, what do you, $12,000 to move it? I can move it. Ain't nothing on there I can't have moved that in a week, and I sure don't make $12,000 a week, trust me. I wish I did. I wouldn't be over there building houses. But, you know, it's up to y'all, I know it is, but I sure need some help on this one.
Mr. Chairman, modify.
Yes, sir.
As a board, a lot of times we make decisions, and it's hard to understand what the effects of those decisions are directly. In a situation like this, would, Mr. Owen, I think you might be the subject matter expert on bonds. Is that fair? For me, whenever I hear a bond, I think of an insurance policy, so I think of like life insurance, for example. I know how much my life insurance, the differences in life insurance between if I had a $200,000 policy or if I had a million-dollar policy. I understand that, right? For a gentleman like him who's before us, who has to go and change his bond from $52,000 to $203,000, what are the real-world implications for him in that situation? What kind of a financial burden is that upon him if we were to approve a $203,000 bond?
I, I can't, I mean, that's an individual relationship between the bank and that individual. So I, I don't, I'm not privy to that information specific to this scenario.
Have you researched that at all, sir, since you read the 203,000?
Oh, they won't give it to me. I've, I've asked the banks, and they said, forget about it. I called them this day, and they told me, forget about it. And I just can't come up with it.
Let, let, I, I believe the situation we're in is, this is a request from, from Mr. Smithson.
Yeah.
To, to facilitate the recording of the plat.
Is it expiring in February?
No.
Okay.
I don't believe it expires for several months.
Yeah.
And, and when it expires, at that time, we would not suggest an increase in the bond, because at that time, there's not a request to file to record the final plat either. So the, the, the trigger of this is the request for facilitating the recording of the final plat.
Which is from Mr. Smithson?
That's my understanding.
Okay. So it, essentially, if we decline the request to facilitate the final plat, you would just stay as, as current bond is, and then he would continue to have to make the improvements?
Correct.
And if you're requested for a final bond again, we would do another inspection to see what improvements have been made, and how far, if we've gone farther, and things could be taken off this list.
And, and as far as I know, unless there's something I'm missing, the only thing that recording the final plat allows Mr. Smithson to do that he can't currently do now is to sell those lots. So I guess that could potentially, obviously would have potential to improve the financial situation of the development. But at the same time, that also puts some pressure on the completion of these tasks that need to be done. And so that's, that's kind of where we're at, a stalemate.
So I guess the question is for Mr. Smithson. If, if you want us to go forward on approving the ability to do that final plat, this is the number our engineers provided, this is the number that we're going to go with, most likely. Or you can withdraw your request, and, so what do you want to do?
I'm going to have to withdraw it, because the bank won't give me the money. They won't do it, not yet, right now. They're just sat there. I, I mean, I have no other choice to.
What, what is your end goal or your intention of trying to receive the final recorded plat now? To sell the lots, or to?
No, 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 I'm not going to sell. I'll even sign an agreement that I won't sell. I have no intentions of selling the lots. I'm just going.
I guess I'm, I'm trying to understand what, what you're trying to obtain by?
Just getting it done.
But if you get everything done on the infrastructure, then you could bring it to us, and we would be able to approve it, if you get the items done, so.
That's, that's what I'll have to do, because I can't come up with that kind of bond.
Yes, sir.
The bank's not going to do it, and the insurance companies are not going to do it. And it's a bank bond now. And the banker just said, absolutely not.
So is it your request to withdraw?
Well, I'm going to come in with half the lots.
I think it's per face?
We could take a look at that possibility.
But that is, that's probably not the intended use, is that?
There's an element of that detention pond that serves the entire development. Now, again, the original construction plans that were submitted and approved to the city have been not just 2008, but I think far back as 90, 99, 97, 99, so.
No, it wouldn't, it wouldn't have been that far back. That's when the, we'd come in with the condos, and then I come back. It's been about seven years ago. And then I put the water and sewer in, and I had to, that's when the economy went down, and I had to pull out and let it sit there. I even had them, the, Dixon Waters took the water overs at least six or seven years ago. Seven years ago, I think it's been, they've had the water and the sewer put in.
Mr. Smithson's correct in that. The 97, the late 90s was the condo part that's in the front. But the construction, the original construction plans, I believe, again, were back in that '07, '08 range.
Unfortunately for me, Mr. Smithson, you, you kind of reinforced the issue when you said, well, I had to pull out because the economy crashed. And it, it happened very quickly, as we all remember. That, that's why I would not be for lowering this amount, because it's, it's the amount plus 25% based on future inflation and costs. So I'm happy to, if you want to withdraw it, that's fine, otherwise I'm going to make a motion to approve it as the numbers have been provided. So I'll give you that option right now.
I'm going to have to. I mean, I got no choice.
Okay.
Only come back in, start over again, or something. I mean, I just can't do it.
I understand. Then, Mr. Chairman, I assume we can consider this item withdrawn and move forward with the meeting?
Yes, sir. If you confirm that, we'll, we'll consider it withdrawn.
I guess, withdraw. But I need a list. Nobody's given me a list of anything.
Do you have that list of what was on our sheet tonight, the takedown?
I don't have anything.
Okay. If we could just send it to them, we'll, we'll get you a copy of it.
The other item, too, is that list is, has some variables associated with it, because to date, a, a, a current set of construction plans has not been produced. So if a current set of construction plans could be produced that I could review to, to have a better understanding of where we are currently today on the site conditions, and what the end result will be based on anything that's changed from 2008, then that, that would help as well. But, you know, the, the, the list of things is based on the approved construction plans, no more nor less.
Okay.
What about the dirt? Do I need to move it, too?
That's your choice.
I'm going to lose all the dirt if I move it, so.
I guess I'm just trying to understand what changes if we, if we approve you for final release. You able to start building on the individual lots, is that?
Well, yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to start two, and then I was going to start in the back of the cul-de-sac and go to.
The next phase?
And go around, and that's, and I say, well, if I can get half of them.
I, I would think, you know, you're, you're going to withdraw, just get, you, you're, when you started tonight, you got, you sounded like some things are on the up and up and making progress, you're getting things delivered, you're moving some stuff around, and so if you get a new set of construction drawings, and we can re-review it, maybe this number goes down based on improvements that you've made in, in the new drawings that we can read against.
What kind of drawings? I don't understand.
Drawing?
Drawings that show the remaining grading work, including the detention pond, as well as the drainage infrastructure that needs to be installed.
Did Chaplain not give that to you?
No.
Because he come out and done the toe poles, and put where the drainage goes, and?
There, I don't believe there were any contouring or grading shown on the submittal by Mr. Chaplain.
Now, I'll ask them, I'll call in more and see what's going on, before I get back.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to reports of discussion information. City Planner?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Smithson.
City Engineer?
Nothing tonight.
City Attorney?
No report, sir.
City Manager?
Mr. Butler, there's the board, just one thing for you tonight. As you may be aware, we're looking to make some improvements in communications at City Hall, particularly with our email system. Over the, of the course of your terms in office, you've been left to use your personal email or other thing for communications with the city. We've since made some changes, have some documents I just need to hand out to the individual board members. Each of you now have a city email address. This is an instruction for how to access that. We will send a test email to this email information this coming Friday. We just need a reply back from each of you to make sure that works. Once we get those replies, this email address will be your official communication to and from the city regarding matters of the city. So if we have a document that comes from the planning department, city attorney, myself, anyone else, it will come to you via this city email address. We'll make sure that we have that up and running, maintain all records for that. So it's just proper for us to make sure we can communicate with you, and you can communicate with us, and we can maintain those records. So other than handing that out for you, I have nothing for you tonight.
Thank you, sir. Communication from the planning commission members? Ms. Lauder?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Anderson?
No.
Mr. Power?
No.
Mayor Blake?
Nothing, sir, thank you.
Mr. Callie?
Nothing, sir.
Commissioner Burks?
Mr. Owens, I didn't mean to imply that you would have made changes about our knowledge in those documents. It's just, by my nature and my profession, I, I'm not going to approve something until I have a chance to go over it one last time in the final version. If I don't do that, bad things happen. So I'm, I'm just cautious, so. That's all. Thank you.
Ms. Quall?
No.
Mr. Jenkins? No, sir. All right, just real quick, I sent you guys, I think your email kicked back to me, but the ethics form, that's due by the end of this month, as a, as a planning commissioner. And then also, I believe we need to calculate our training and vote on our training hours for the 2018 calendar year to approve. Maybe we can get them onto the agenda for next month. And then, of course, we're always talking about potential new ways, we're trying to find some new ways. I know City Manager Collins has been talking about it. And if we could get the subdivision regulations and the zoning ordinances on the website for everybody to review for the public hearing. And that is all I have. Thank you, guys, good night. I entertain the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So move.